Okay, it is seven o'clock on Tuesday, September 18th. So we'll call the committee of the whole meeting to order. First item on the agenda is roll call, please.
Rosado.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chancet.
Here.
Salvati. Wolf.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan. Meitzler. Malley. Uier. Serone. And McFadden.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum to conduct the business tonight. So the next item then is items removed, added, or changed. And I understand, Laura, that we want to remove item number five from the discussion tonight.
Yes.
And then we want to also move item number eight up to, in place of item number five.
Yes.
And the reason for that is because the public hearing is scheduled for 7:35, so we can't start before that. So we'll move things around in order to accommodate that time that's been publicized.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Item number three matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Anybody have anything for us that's not on the agenda? Okay, we're going to move on then to item number four, which is the wastewater treatment plant construction project monthly update. Alderman O'Brien, you're going to start us with that?
We have an update where a lot of things seem to be getting done, thanks to, I believe, the oversight of Trotter. And I'll just let Jerry take it from here and he'll run us through some slides.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Here's the monthly update for last 30 days, so August through September. There's been a lot of work going on, as Alderman O'Brien noted, down at the plant. We've been working about, still about 50, 60 strong onsite every day, every weekday, that is. Inside the main building, they're working on MEPs, still finishing those up. There's still a lot of finishes to do, but we're now putting in things like acoustic ceiling tile trays and cleaning up the walls for their final surface coats and things like that. We are nearly 80% done with exterior masonry. We're almost complete with the main building up north. There's a lot of brick, so if you see it walking by, you'll see that most of it is covered. There is a section on the front of the main building where they have some work to do down low to support the brick, but that's one of only a couple sections that they have left remaining. The process equipment is starting to get installed along with some HVAC equipment, duct work, et cetera. Digestor operations building, we have backfilled around that building. We have started the installation and completed the installation of the structural CMU superstructure above grade. And we've installed the precast concrete roof planks. And the equipment and process piping is also starting to be installed in the basement of that building. The digester covers are complete. They've been painted, they've been tested, they are ready to go. The thing, and before I'm asked, the thing that's holding them from actually getting started is the building that just had the roof put on and the block installed and the equipment is starting to be installed. That digester operations building has to be powered and punched out and complete, all the equipment started up, before we can send sludge to those digesters. So we still have some time before that happens. As far as site work goes, they finished the installation of the last remaining section of 36-inch pipe underground. There is still a little bit of force main left to install, but that, a little bit of duck bank down at the south end of the site and the remaining site improvements, obviously curb and gutter, sidewalk, pavement, as far as site work's concerned, all that is still yet to happen. As far as costs, to date, spent just over $20 million on the project, including engineering and construction. The estimated progress here is what you had in your information for the agenda, so that's 81% from when I had the last schedule update and per request. Since then, and I'll show you this when we get to the schedule, the contractor's gone from 81 to 86, generally bumps it by about 5% a month. So the timing of this update is a little bit different than last, so you're going to be seeing two schedule updates. As far as change orders, nothing more to report there. Change order six went through. We're still at just over 1% change orders, and that amounts to just over $283,000. Now for scheduling. So, the last time we spoke, we were about 30 days behind schedule. Since then, the August update, which happened a couple days after I spoke with you last, we had another update from the contractor that pushed it back actually about a month past that. So about 60 days behind schedule. The main reason for that was the contractor determined that the motor control center, which is a large box of electrical equipment that powers the digester operations building that we're waiting so earnestly for to get started up, was pushed a month. Now, that wasn't that it was caught in Texas or something like that. The manufacturer could not fabricate it and deliver it on the original date. And so we have a delay of about a month for that, and that is what the contractor is saying has pushed his final completion back a month. Can't start up equipment, can't finish up the building, can't start up the digesters, and that has a lot of domino effects. So if you see the red circle there, which I can't because I unfortunately forgot my glasses today, just over 60 days, I believe, for this schedule update. These are the rest of those tasks. You'll see that, again, that most of the tasks on this schedule are red, so everything is stacked up at the end, just as we discussed several months ago. This is the most recent schedule update, which I just received on Sunday. This includes change order number six, which granted the contractor 11 additional days of time for the construction progress. However, they did lose five days within the last month, and so they only show a six-day reduction in that construction delay overall. As of today, there's about 40 days remaining till contractual substantial completion. So the contractor is obviously very well aware of it, very well aware of liquidated damages, which will start on the day after that date. And we are working with him to get the rest of the project done as quickly as possible so that we can wrap up the project, get it done, and everybody can leave the project whole and happy. Now, as far as photos go, actually, you know what? Why don't we hold there? Does anybody have any questions about the schedule? I just went through a lot real quick.
Is the delay on the equipment that's coming in, is that on them?
Yes.
So that's their problem? It'll be assessed liquid damages towards them, nothing we have to deal with?
I'm not saying that he won't ask.
Right, I know he'll ask.
For a delay due to circumstances beyond his power. But I can tell you that as far as everything that was within our control, we returned everything to him within a very reasonable period. When it comes to shop drawing review, everything else was in his hands and therefore is on him.
I mean, they knew what kind of lead they had to have on that, and it just didn't happen.
Correct.
Jerry, what, why'd they lose five days?
That I don't know. I asked him that.
Well, they've been pretty cooperative, correct?
Yes. Yes, I think, I spoke with him about it this afternoon, because I knew I'd be asked. And he said he'd have to really dig into the schedule, and so I dug into the schedule myself. I couldn't find one specific culprit of why it was pushed back those five days over the last month.
How do they plan to make up any time? Are they working Saturdays?
They haven't yet. I don't anticipate that they will anymore. So now we're in sort of a, the project is going to get completed. The contractor is going to do it to the best of his abilities within his normal working hours and normal working days, and probably not work weekends if I were to guess. But we are obviously going to encourage that because liquidated damages being what they are and issues after the project is done or almost done, nobody wants that hangover of the project for the next however many weeks or months.
Right. I would think more importantly than liquidated damages, we're not looking for liquidated damages, we want our wastewater treatment facility the way we planned it, and that's what we're looking for. And that's what we're hoping you're pushing them towards, you know, is we want our facility.
I understand.
And I know you guys know it, I know that, but he might need to know it a little better, more clearly, I guess, so.
We are pushing him to the extent that we can. We're trying to make everything as easy as possible when it comes to coordination, the rest of his work. He's got work items that are onsite that are affecting, obviously, the operators that work there every day, and they've been extremely, I guess, giving with their space and time in order to allow the contractor to get what he needs to get done, done. Shutdowns have been coordinated very well and smoothly. We still have a couple yet to go, but as far as what we've done on our end, I think we've done a great job, and the city staff has done a great job with coordinating with contractor and making sure that he has what he needs when he needs it.
Right. Communication is everything.
Yes. And we've also been, in every construction meeting that we have, our meeting tomorrow morning, we'll be reminding him gently that these are how many days that are left, these are how many days that he's projected to be behind, and this is therefore the resulting liquidated damage sum that he faces.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for Jerry before he moves on?
Jerry, I just wanted to interject. One of the things that we've been able to accomplish over there is to resolve the conflict with the bike path and the way that that will be oriented through the project in cooperation with the Park District. And would you want to talk a little bit about how that was resolved? Do you have anything that you can refer to up there to show them what that final path looks like?
To show you, no.
No.
I can describe it.
Okay.
I wish I did. We are, if people are familiar with the site, I can try to describe it as best I can or I can bring up a map. I'll try to do that while I'm talking. Essentially, we have an area where Shumway meets Flynn at an intersection down near the plant. And at that location, where my mouse is, there it is. There we go. So there's a little bit of an old map, but at this location, the bridge comes over from the east side of the river to the west. At this location, the bike path diverges. One section that heads north runs north along Shumway. The other section that heads south along the west bank of the Fox River goes across the face, the north face of the project site. So the issue that we were faced with was how to encourage traffic to go through the shared roadway on Flynn Street for the time being, and to make sure that they don't impede any of the traffic going into and out of the large truck bays that face north, that have entrances that go out onto Flynn, as well as the main north gate that is on Shumway. What we've done is we've added to the scope of work a four-foot tall fence that's going to be just along the curb line here. What's that going to do? What that is going to do is that's going to direct traffic northward before they just hop the curb and go out in the middle of the street to a depressed curb area up here near the middle of the intersection. Now, depending on what the city elects to do with the bike path, right now we are anticipating that in the short term, the city may elect to obtain an easement or part of this property parcel here on the north side of Flynn, pass some parking stalls that we're putting in as part of this project. So the bikers and pedestrians will cross the intersection to the corner, the northwest corner of this intersection, and follow a new sidewalk around this area, that property, to the connecting portion on Flynn Street where my cursor is right here. Sorry if it's difficult to see. So that's something that we worked with the Park District, with City Electric, because there is a light pole there that we're removing. We are making the turn north a little bit more gradual by adding some pavers, and the fence will obviously be a physical barrier to prevent people from going out onto the, onto Shumway immediately after they cross the bridge. There will be wayfinding signs and things of that nature that the city's going to be providing separately, and we hope that this will ease the transition from people that are so used to coming over the bridge and just crossing the street. I know that over the last year, they've been prevented from doing so, so this is basically going to be a continuation of that barrier. Yeah.
Continue, I guess. Thank you.
Sure.
Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to interject. I don't know if I told Jerry or not. The gentleman who was very instrumental in helping us figure out where the route of the bicycle trail should go immediately on the west side of the treatment plant, back when it was originally put in in 1981, we brought it down through there, and it was, you know, wild area. And so Phil Elstrom knew this gentleman very well, and they worked very closely with the county, and we got the path that's there now and has been there since ever. The gentleman passed away earlier this year, and his family has contacted us and indicated that they are in the process of gathering some money, and they are going to buy a memorial bench and some, maybe a bike parking stop that they're going to want, they'd like to put someplace in that area there, just, I mean, I think there's probably some room to do it, but it'll be a nice little respite there for somebody that comes through there who wants to go up the hill or whatever have you. And they're going to put a plaque on the bench in memory of him, because he's the one that basically helped Elstrom come up with the right-of-way that went through there. He was a big bicycle rider way back then, and he was, it was Rich James who lived over on Elm Street and most recently lived on Union, and had been a big involvement person in that neighborhood for years. And when we put the bike trail through there at the first, it was highly controversial, especially by the people down south of the cemetery. They did not want it. That was going to be the ruination of their property, and nobody was going to use it, it was going to depreciate property values, it's going to be a haven for burglars and drug dealers, all of which has never come true, but we went through all that. And Mr. James was one of the few down in the neighborhood that, he literally, I think, was over there going door-to-door telling them all on Water Street, "This will be a good thing for you, don't be knocking this." And so he really did have his stamp on it, so I don't think we're going to have a problem with putting a bench down there, but you'll be probably putting it there next year, it won't be immediately, but.
All right, pictures. So here is what you've seen. This is July, this is the progress through August, or through the early August month, early August weeks. Starting to get the brick done on the west half of the north face of this building. Now you can see this is from the eighth. I didn't quite get my drone footage in from Friday, but you'll see it next month. How's that sound? You can see that most of the side of the building is done. The windows are not installed, the doors are not installed, there's things like that that are still yet to be installed, but they're making a lot of really good progress. And here you see they're starting to work on some of the curb work and sidewalk work in front of the building. Here's the south face of the building in July, August, and September. Actually, what you can see in this next few pictures is the, I'll jump back there, the, there's more brick that's been installed over the last week, a substantial amount. They've really been going at it. So I do have a picture later on that shows some of the brick on the south side of these tanks on the right-hand side of the building. I mentioned there was equipment being put in. These are three of the makeup air units in the mechanical room upstairs in the northeast corner of the building. Gas lines have been run to it, they're starting to wire these pieces of equipment. These are the polymer units in the polymer room and all the different small diameter piping that goes to and from those units. Here's that picture I was mentioning of the storage tanks and the brick that's been installed on them. This was just from yesterday. And like I said, inside, they're getting to the point where they're putting acoustic ceiling tile trays up and cleaning up the walls, so you'll see more finished product the next month that I come and speak with you. As far as the digesters go, July, we were still working on the covers, obviously, of the digesters, and the building was basically still within a very large excavation. In August, the excavation was still there, the covers were much further along, starting to get painted. You'll notice that the right one is black, the final color. And this was from the eighth of September. Both of the digester covers are completely painted black, the building has been backfilled, and the superstructure's there, and it has a roof on it. Some of the large diameter piping that's going in the basement, these are 24-inch diameter pipes, so they're pretty sizable. It takes a while for them to get installed and get installed properly, and that has been going on for the last couple weeks. Just a close-up shot of the 40-foot diameter digester covers. And here are the pumps that were actually delivered today. Those down there driving through, and these are the intermediate pumps that will go into the digester operations building wet wells. Four of them in total. And that is the rest of the report. Does anybody have any further questions?
Anybody comments? Susan?
I got a text today from someone who said that it was smelling pretty bad downtown. So I went through the whole explanation again of, you know, the digesters are open and they're moving things over to the, to be hauled away, et cetera. But how much longer do you think? I mean, I know when it gets cold out, it's going to start to fix itself, but any updates on timetable?
Startup for digester operations is scheduled for November.
Okay.
So part of that extra.
So there'll be snow and ice, and it's not going to smell much anymore, anyway.
It won't smell as bad, correct? Yeah.
When next summer comes, do you think that we'll notice an appreciable difference?
It'll be substantial, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'll let people know.
Dave?
Jerry, or maybe this question might even go to the mayor. I'm just thinking that at some point in time here, whether it be before we're completely done, but yet when the building is safe, or maybe when we're completely done, you know, maybe it'd be good if we could get the entire council to come down and walk around and see what we're doing, or maybe even wait until the end and have an open house for the community if they want to come down and see what their 40-some million dollars is being spent on.
I think, number one, the council should go down and have a more in-depth tour of, yeah, but, I don't know, refer to Jerry as to when you think that would be, what we can see the most for our.
It'd be nice if we could do it before the weather gets bad, obviously.
Presentable, but before the weather gets bad.
Yeah. Can you schedule that in your schedule?
I will work that in. I'll try to set up a date for sometime in November. How's that sound?
Maybe you could think about it. It'd be nice if we could do it in an evening before we have our meeting, but the time's going to change, so that probably won't work unless we get it all the way up to like 5:00 or something. I don't know if that would even work, you know, we're going to need light. Maybe it'll have to be a Saturday morning or something, if anybody can make, you know, think about it, work with staff and.
We'll need to work with Trotter and coordinate with contractor. Right now, the site is still kind of a closed site. I mean, even our guys don't really have free access to the site.
Yeah.
For obvious reasons, the contractor has his own crews in there and liabilities, but we'll definitely work on something. And to answer your second question, that's already on our radar, to have an open house. So some sort of, you know, public acknowledgement of that.
I would think late October on a Saturday would be best.
Oh, that's probably Marty.
So, anybody else?
Oh, yeah, Mike.
All right, Jerry, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your efforts, too.
Yeah.
Hello?
Marty, are you there?
I am here.
Okay. For the record, we have Marty Callahan on the phone to join us with the meeting. He is out of town and in business tonight. Okay, Marty, we are moving the agenda around a little bit. We just had our presentation on the wastewater treatment plant update. We're now going to, we did scratch the discussion on the debt issuance, and we are going to switch and go to the resolution 18-109 for the ownership of the Batavia Dam. Alderman, Atack, you got that?
Yes. So last Tuesday, we had a presentation from the attorney we hired to determine ownership, and he did indeed say that Batavia owns the dam. So staff is recommending that we pass this resolution acknowledging that Batavia owns the dam. So if there are any questions, are there any questions, comments?
My comment is, I hate like heck owning the dam, but I do follow, you know, putting that on the people, but it is, I understand what the attorney said, and I would definitely follow his ideas and go with that.
Thank you. Anything else?
My comment is, again, I agree with Alderman O'Brien on this, so I'm going to support this resolution, but I am glad to see the one paragraph where it says, whereas at a later date, the city attempted to convey the new dam to the state. I was happy to see that in there.
Well, I move that we recommend to council approval of resolution 18-109-R, resolution acknowledging ownership of the Batavia Dam by the city of Batavia, Illinois. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's a vote I really didn't think we'd ever get to.
Agreed. Now, the big question, is that a consent agenda item or regular agenda?
Just consent.
Consent.
Put it to vote.
Yeah.
I want to know what to do with it.
Gary, would you like to give an update on the status of the signage and lighting project?
We must work together. Since we do have a few minutes, I just wanted to touch base with council on what's going on with that project. As you all know, there's a couple of signs in pretty remote locations, especially up the west bank up on Trail. And access to those locations is very limited, because we can't image the trail and get large equipment in there. So our contractor has kind of been scratching his head, coming up with different ideas. And just this week, we reached out and gotten approval back from our structural engineers for a different type of mounting system that will allow our contractor to drill into the limestone and basically epoxy bars into the limestone along with a bracket, that then the wood post can go into that bracket. So it's a different way of doing it. So we're kind of gotten over that hump, we believe, to then maybe allow fabrication to begin and retract that process. So I brought up to you several weeks ago now, and I'll remind you again, that when the signs go up north of Irverain here, there's several of them, so the point is to draw the attention of the public to the potential hazard of the dam. We are being very sensitive to the vistas and to views, but at the same time, we don't want to hide all the warning signs so people can't see them. So it's kind of a balance that we're trying to strike. So I guess that's the update, is we are now reaching that point, and we've had these other issues related to installation.
Thanks, Gary. Anybody else have anything on this? Okay, we do still have five minutes before we can hold the public hearing, so does anybody have anything we could fill that five minutes with? Otherwise, we'll just take a five-minute break.
Do project status?
All right, let's jump into project status.
Okay. One thing that I wanted to discuss this evening was about home rule, and that staff feels that it would be wise to provide factual information to our residents in the event that they just simply don't have time to attend one of these meetings, or they're not exposed to the information that we've provided on our website or online. And we want to stay far back from the line of utilizing any city resources in advocacy of any position either in favor or against home rule, but it's such an important issue in our town that we want to make sure that by the time somebody gets to the ballot box to vote, that they at least have the basic information about what home rule is, what Batavia has done with its home rule authority in the nine years that it has had home rule authority, so that they can make a knowledgeable vote when they get there, whichever way they choose to vote. We also want to invite the public to a meeting that will be held here at city council chambers on October 8th at 7:00 PM, and that will include, again, an informational presentation in the beginning, along with the opportunity for members of the public to ask any questions that they might have. In attendance on a panel for responding to those questions would be myself, Peggy Colby, Director of Finance, Chief Dan Ewell, and the city's attorney, Kevin Drendel.
It'd be very good to have the facts out there.
It'd be very good to have the facts out there.
Well, I mean, I think it's important to do this, because I guess there was a meeting last night that I did not attend, but from what I understand, that there was a lot of misinformation being passed along, and that's, you know, detriment to our city, because whatever home rule the people decide, the people need to know the truth before they make a decision. And there's been a lot of that, as I said, in the past. Past history on some of these referendums, a lot of misinformation that went unanswered and unchallenged, and some votes that were taken were highly detrimental to our city. And so I'm all for our city staff putting the truth out there and letting people make their, you know, learned decision, as opposed to a decision from mistruths and half-truths and misinformation.
Anything else for an update?
No, that's it, unless anybody has any questions about any particular project for me.
I gotta say, this is probably the first time since I've been sitting here that we've actually tried to make the meeting last longer. Does anybody have any others? I, or I do have one other. I mentioned it to Jeff before the meeting, but just so he doesn't forget and I don't forget, as I was walking up tonight, I noticed that we've got some issues with our gutters up here.
Mm-hmm. Yes, we're addressing that.
Okay.
Yes.
And then lastly, and I don't want you to think that I'm jumping on anybody's bandwagon here, but as I was driving down Kirk Road tonight, I happened to be going by Geezy Road, just as a little boy was coming down Geezy Road carrying a backhoe out. He obviously, I mean, I know construction, he obviously was going too fast for the conditions, and you couldn't see a half a block down that road because of the dust that was flying up. So I just don't understand why we don't put some enforcement, make something happen, rather than waiting because it's going to be paved in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
I mean, that was just, what I saw was absolutely unexcusable.
If I can add to that, please, I mean, Laurie, you and I went and looked at it, walked it, and, you know, there are irritants in the air, and we saw some, you know, it must have been a toddler walking with his mother through a cloud of dust. Well, I mean, that's really unacceptable.
And even the normal traffic through there really kicked up a lot of dust.
We'll have to make, like Jay did, do some, we have to address it, anyway, please.
And if it's not in the contractor's contract, then I think the city should accept the responsibility of getting a private contractor out there to sweep that street and give our citizens what they should be getting.
Okay.
We spent money on an awful lot of stuff, and what I saw today was something we should spend money on.
All right.
Okay. I've got 7:35.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so it is 7:35, so we will call the public hearing to order. This is a public hearing for the annexation agreement for the property located at 2401 Hawks Drive, 37W 405, and 37W 475 Fabian Parkway, and also the Janet Lane Rightofway. So because this is a public hearing, if anybody in the public would like to give testimony about this annexation agreement, now would be the time to come up to the podium and do
Good evening. My name's Tracy Casson of Rathgen Wood, we're representing the developer. We can speak about the annexation agreement and the underlying ordinances that would be attached to it, to give a brief presentation on our proposal.
Scott, I mean, it'd be fine with me if we, it doesn't look like there's anybody else from the public here, we could close the public hearing, and then we could go into the annexations themselves.
Get the presentation on the normal agenda items. Yes.
Okay. All right, Susan, would you like to close the public hearing?
Sure.
Motion to close the public hearing by Susan?
I was going to second it after you said-
Second by Chanzik, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing has been closed, so now, Susan, I'm going to turn item number seven over to you, which is the Windmill Landing Annexation and Development, 42401 Hawks Drive, 37W 405, and 37W 475 Fabian Parkway, and Janet Lane Rightofway. Mr. JNB Batavia LLC is the applicant, and Alderman Stark, I'll turn it over to you.
Sounds good. As some emails went back and forth today between Joel and I, and Dave was copied, there's some complications in all of this, and so I asked Joel if he would just handle all of this part of it, because there are many moving parts that go along with the ordinances and the annexation. So if he'd like to go through it all, that'd be great.
Sure. First, the email, the emails were just some clarifications about what entering into the annexation agreement obligates the city to do, and I'll get into that in my report. Also, that we heard from the applicant earlier today that they expect to close on the property on Thursday, to close on the Hawks Drive property on Thursday. They are currently the contract purchaser of that property, and they own the pieces on Fabian Parkway. As I mentioned, as mentioned, MR JNB Batavia LLC is the applicant. They have submitted a proposal to annex approximately seven acres of land on Hawks Drive and Fabian Parkway. And on that property, they are seeking to develop a 142-unit congregate living facility, which would be called Windmill Landings. This is for senior assisted living, 118 units, and for memory care with 24 units and potential future development on the site. They are also seeking to have the Janet Lane Rightofway vacated after annexation. The applicant and staff began discussing annexation and development of property for this facility in January of 2016, so it's been quite a while coming. The Batavia Plan Commission held a public hearing for the proposed project on July 18th. They conditionally recommended approval of all the requested actions. The commission also conditionally approved design review for the project. As is customary with annexation of land for proposed development, the applicant would enter into an annexation agreement with the city to specify terms of annexation and development entitlements. Some of the specific terms of note in the agreement include city annexation of the site after the applicant acquires the Hawks Drive property. Again, we understand that to be on Thursday. Applying the mixed-use zoning district with a plan development overlay to include modifications to the zoning code, and for the property to be developed in accordance with the approved plan development plans. There are a number of modifications to the zoning code that have been requested and recommended for approval by the Plan Commission as part of this, and they are spelled out in the plan development ordinance, which is 18-64. They are also seeking subdivision of the property, and as part of that, they are seeking to have variations to the subdivision regulations granted, and those are, again, spelled out in the resolution for the subdivision. Another note, another item of note in the agreement is to, is that the applicant would record a covenant, which would limit unit occupancy to the leaseholder, that would require the leaseholder and primary occupant to be a minimum of 55 years of age. The primary occupant can't have a spouse of any age. And any children of the primary occupant would be the only children that would be allowed, and they must be a minimum of 23 years of age. And there may also be support employees or support helpers to those residents, provided they are a minimum of 23 years of age. There are other occupants that may be allowed by state or federal law, and the covenant is an exhibit to the annexation agreement. Also of note is acknowledgement that the improvements on the property, building improvements, will comply with the 2015 International Building Code Series that is scheduled for the city to adopt sometime this winter. Also included in the agreement is that the city would vacate the Janet Lane Rightofway. Also of note is that we would be allowing additional development on the site, and this additional development could include up to 30 additional congregate care units. Any development on the site would be allowed, provided that there is not an excessive amount of total sanitary sewage usage, and that is spelled out in the agreement. Also, that the property can use the key tributary Bravorn Marsh area for stormwater detention, as was contemplated for this property in the Harza study that established the facility. Staff is supportive of the proposal and has worked extensively with the applicant to receive the Plan Commission recommendations and the Plan Commission design review approval. The applicant and staff have worked to negotiate the terms of the annexation agreement, that is an exhibit to ordinance 18-60, and we have negotiated the terms to the satisfaction of both staff and the applicant, and we feel the agreement is now ready for council consideration. Ordinance 18-61 would amend the land use map of the comprehensive plan to apply the mixed-use land use classification on the properties, including the Janet Lane Rightofway that would be vacated. Ordinance 18-62 would annex the site and the adjacent Fabian Parkway and Janet Lane Rightsofway, and it would also zone the property to the MU mixed-use zoning district, which would be consistent with the amended land use plan, or the land use map. Ordinance 18-63 would vacate the Janet Lane Rightofway, as specified in the annexation agreement, and ownership of the vacated area would go to JNB, which would be the owner of all the adjacent private property. Ordinance 18-64 would amend the zoning map to establish a mixed-use district plan development overlay. The Plan Commission recommended approval for plans as part of this plan development that would be part of the overlay, and these plans are exhibits to the plan development ordinance. This ordinance also enumerates the Plan Commission's recommended conditions of approval and the modifications to the requirements of the zoning code. Resolution 18-104-R would approve the final plat for the Windmill Landings re-subdivision. The subdivision proposes dedication of over a half an acre to KDOT for the Fabian Parkway Rightofway, and this dedication would provide a continuous 85 feet to the center line of the Rightofway. A 15-foot-wide highway easement is proposed on the property to the south of this Rightofway dedication, and this would contain the proposed bike path. Staff feels that the highway easement provisions on the plat should obligate the landowner, in this case, it would be JNB, to maintain the bicycle path. Staff notes the sidewalk to the east and along Fabian, and the bike path to the west along Fabian are also an easement, and the city does not maintain either of these. The city should not be the entity to maintain this segment of the bike path. The applicant has agreed to remove the easement provisions in demnification language that staff had identified as an issue in the report. The applicant is opposed to being the entity to maintain the bicycle path. That can be discussed this evening. KDOT has reviewed the proposal and is accepting of the Fabian Parkway dedication. KDOT has noted that they will require a longer Fabian Parkway left-turn lane into the property, and that can be addressed as part of final engineering with the building permit. The Plan Commission, in their review, noted that the proposal would allow for quality development to provide needed elderly care services in the city and for the surrounding area. The commission was supportive of annexing the property and of the development. By votes of five to zero, the Plan Commission recommended approval to amend the land use map of the comprehensive plan to apply the mixed-use district or the mixed-use land use classification. They recommended approval to zone the property to the MU mixed-use district. They recommended approval to add a mixed-use plan development overlay on the property, subject to conditions and modifications to the requirements of the zoning code, and these are spelled out in ordinance 18-64. They also recommended approval of the final plat of re-subdivision, subject to the conditions and, subject to conditions and variations to the subdivision regulations as specified in Resolution 18-104-R. And finally, by a vote of five to zero, the Plan Commission approved the design review, subject to the city council approval of the comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments, final approval by city staff of development plans, and that the development be in substantial conformance with the plan development plans. The COW has, or the city council has alternatives, as with any proposal. We do note that approval of all the ordinances and resolution are needed for the applicant to move forward with this project. Approval of the annexation agreement essentially obligates the city council to approve all the other ordinances and the resolution. The agreement and ordinances will be amended to reflect JNB being the owner of the Hawks Drive property, and these documents may also be amended per COW direction through its review this evening. The resolution to approve the plat also must be approved, and it too may be amended to accommodate a decision regarding bicycle path maintenance. The city council, as an alternative, can decide to continue its deliberation of this project to a future date or to not approve it. There are, there are advantages or pros to this approval being, to this project being approved. It would allow for annexation of property to close the remaining gap of unincorporated land on Hawks Drive, and it would reduce the unincorporated gap on Fabian Parkway. Approval would allow the project to move forward, and it would, to provide needed elderly care service, elderly care service, it would add city utility customers and potential retail customers, which would add to the city's real estate, and it would add to the city's real estate tax base. Windmill Landings would employ 90 persons when fully occupied, 63 of which would be full-time, and additional jobs may be created with future development. Not approving, con, not approving the ordinance and resolution would result in the property remaining in their current conditions and not subject to City of Batavia property maintenance requirements. The Janet Lane Rightofway would remain a township road. In terms of budget impact, annexation development would add to the city's retail, or add to the city's real estate tax base. Windmill Landings employees and visitors may patronize nearby businesses, which could result in increased sales tax revenue. There would be no impact to staff, to staff time. Timeline for actions is interesting. The applicant is requesting city council final action on the agreement at this time, with action on the other items after they acquire the property. And after they acquire the property, notification of council consideration of annexation is executed, we as staff have to send out a notification that the council will be considering an annexation ordinance, and so that would come at a later date. The city council, however, must take action on the comprehensive plan amendment as soon as possible. State law requires the council to take action on that no more than 90 days after the public hearing. The Plan Commission held the public hearing on July 18th, so time is running out on that. We have, with Committee of the Whole recommendations on what's in front of you tonight, we can schedule the council action on the annexation agreement and the comprehensive plan amendment on October 1st, and then council action on the remaining items may take place as early as October 15th. And again, COW action on all items tonight would allow for that timeline. Staff recommends that the committee recommend approval of ordinances 18-60, 18-61, 18-62, 18-63. eighteen dash sixty-one, eighteen dash sixty-two, eighteen dash sixty-three, and eighteen dash sixty-four with amending the documents to reflect the JNB ownership of twenty-four oh one Hawks Drive. There may also be additional direction to amend the documents per the outcome of the conversation this evening. Regarding the easement provisions on the final plat of subdivision, re-subdivision for Windmill Landings, this is the resolution. Staff feels that the easement provision should be amended to obligate the property owner to maintain the bicycle path and to remove the indemnification language as agreed to by the applicant. The committee can discuss this and if desired, direct staff to add a condition of approval to the resolution to address these issues accordingly. The resolution would be amended then for presentation to the city council for final action. And with that, staff would recommend approval of resolution, resolution eighteen dash one oh four dash R.
Okay, thank you. Now, tell me who maintains the adjacent bicycle paths?
There, we haven't found out exactly who maintains the bicycle path to the west. The city does not maintain it. We've contacted KDOT. They don't, they say that they not, they wouldn't maintain it. So absent that, it might fall on the property owner which would be the entity that owns the dryer, the dryer property. And to the east, there's a sidewalk along Fabian and that is maintained by Walmart as part of the annexation agreement for that whole complex.
And about how much footage is it that the, this bike path covers that we're talking about?
I don't know if, how the, the length of the property.
About six hundred feet.
About six hundred feet? And I don't want to put you on the spot. And since the developers here, or the attorneys here, why is, why is this a sticking point?
Because we as staff didn't identify that note in the easement provisions earlier. And we brought it to the attention of the applicant a week and a half or so ago.
And the attorneys here to do a presentation or the developers here to do a presentation on what Windmill, or what this project, they sound the same, Windmill Landings.
Correct.
Be like, so that would be great if we could see the presentation too.
Mayor?
Yeah, I was out the other day to Windmill Manor which I guess is the place across the street. And the question was raised to me by some of the residents out there, are we going to have a continuous sidewalk on the north side of Fabian from this development down to the Walmart?
Fabian or source side of?
North side of, excuse me, north side of Hawks Drive down to the Walmart.
The petitioner here will be building a sidewalk along their frontage and then when the Heinous property develops, we will have a linkage into that.
That's what I thought. Heinous owns some still in there.
Correct.
Welcome again and, and we'd love to see the presentation on the project.
Well, yeah, Dave, Joel covered everything here, so I don't have anything else to say until maybe the end. And it has been, right, two and a half years and we're finally here. And Dave will cover this too, just on the bike path. We are giving up a lot of right-of-way to KDOT, over a half acre, not being compensated for it. And then also that highway easement that they want is another fifteen feet. We really can't do anything else in there as far as other utility easements that then we have to push back further because they want a bike path. And it's eventually going to be a regional, I think, path. So Dave will talk a little bit about that, but, and the maintenance.
Thank you. If you could state your name for the record, that would be great.
Good evening. My name is David Smith. I'm with the Russell Companies. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, MR JNB Batavia LLC. I've been working out in this area, the Fox Valley for longer than I think about back in the eighties. Developed all the retail on both sides of the street from Fabian Parkway north to Fargo Boulevard back in the day in Geneva. And worked with Tom Rossiter and Joe Keim and others on all those properties and assembling those and developing there and, and fell in love with the Fox Valley area. And at the time, we actually had owned the Hawks Farmstead home and some other property there. There came a time when it wasn't ready to be developed, but we were developing north and the city came back to us, Mayor Shulkey in particular had called and said, you know, would you consider selling that property back to another developer to do a Walmart? And we agreed and we agreed to sell it back at our cost. We didn't ask for anything more out of it. We agreed to let it go for exactly what we had in it. And obviously turned into a wonderful development for the city of Batavia. As you can tell, we've worked on this project for a little over two to three years, I guess now, and have really enjoyed working with your staff. They're, they're very well-trained, they're very, very thorough. And as part of this process, it's, it's been, and it has been a process of navigating through all the steps here. We've got Geneva Park Districts, we've got King County to work with, with the right-of-way along Fabian Parkway. And through this, this process, our type of development, which is a gynecic care facility that has independent assisted memory care, although all the units are licensed for, for assisted care, it doesn't really fit in any one zoning classification very well. We started out looking at it as, keeping it as a general commercial and changing that to an R five designation with, with a PUD overlay. And as we get into the mechanics of that and working with, with Scott and Joel and others, it was evident that the, the variations and deviations, they may call it, became voluminous. And so we were trying to find a better solution to, how, how can we apply for this and make it the least painful and fit as close as we could within the classification? And lo and behold, the, the mixed use came around and it wasn't, it approved use within that district or that classification. And absent it being in the downtown, it seemed to fit pretty well. So we, we really minimized the amount of variances we needed. As part of this annexation, excuse me, as part of our rezoning and so forth, our hope was to provide some flexibility of expansion of this. So all the communities that we have done and we envision going forward doing, we always try to have at least one additional wing to that property. And we like having it be truly a mixed use, that having the medical, dryer medical facility next door to the west and potentially having other medical office uses on this campus, we think would be beneficial. As it was pointed out, as Joel was reading through the list of pros, we employ seventy to a hundred people at this facility. It's a forty-five million dollar total cost project. It will generate a significant amount of new property tax. We're definitely consumers of your utilities that are provided by the community. And it's a market rate senior project. I was involved also with the project to the south Windmill Manor. And we think that the synergies of having those two facilities so close together will be beneficial for both sides. It's a great project. We're, we're thrilled to be started with it. We just finished a project and opened last month in Moline, Illinois, on a hundred and thirty-eight unit senior project. And this one is going to be even larger than that, so it'll be in excess of two hundred thousand square feet. We have underground parking under the north-south wing which is primarily the independent and assisted living wing. It's got some great vistas to the south over the Brabird Marsh that are unobstructed and I think will be a real highly sought-after opportunity for seniors who are living there. So close to goods and services, medical, or right there on the former Delnor which is Northwestern Medical now on, on Randall Road. So we think it's very well situated and my philosophy is to try to build these types of facilities and integrate them into the community, into mixed use. So it's in close proximity to all these things we talked about, families, school, church, et cetera, et cetera, so that the, the parents of the children who live here or the residents who've lived here forever who live in these facilities have all these things at their, at their fingertips and it makes it much more convenient for everyone. If I can, now, which, Joel, which is the one that I'm supposed to open, right?
The corner. Part to the left.
That one? Nope.
Close.
So what you see is the plan overlaid on an aerial. This is the rear service drive on the west behind the dryer medical facility. Fabian Parkway is here at the top of the page. The Heinous property which has been discussed is lies here behind the Walmart and this being now Hawks Drive which was South Drive is the road that separates us from Windmill Manor to the south. The property would start at the western edge, the outdoor area here for the memory garden for the memory care patients. Excuse me, go back one. The access, what's interesting about this site because of topography, we had to increase the height of the first floor of the building to Scott Likens fourteen feet. Scott's here from BLDD, should have been introductions first, Steve Kubla from Connect Engineering, this is Ward from Dial Retirement Communities who's our operating partner from the First Tracy Caston, our attorney with Rashi Woodworth. So it's an L-shaped building. Access from the lower side off of Hawks Drive is where all the deliveries will come into. And we have also a meeting room in the area below here that is available for use as we bring in, you know, schoolchildren for Coral Programs and so forth that they have direct access in the south side of the building, coming into that area where the theater is. And all of our waste, the trash will be hauled off out of this area as well. So that's the main delivery and disposition of materials from this area, which is nice because it's, you know, lined up where the main service drive is for Walmart as well off of South Drive and it, it limits the impact off of Fabian Parkway. And we want the Fabian Parkway to be our main access for visitors coming to, to visit their, their parents or family members. It's a little more safe and secure parking field, comes into the main level. We'll have a four-story glass entry area here that has a lot of amenity space built into it. And of course, the main access then to the parking underneath the building will come in off of Hawks Drive as well and at grade. So we've made up the grade change, so we have a lower access at the ground level or, or basement level if you will. And then also we have access at the first floor level which is the main concourse level. This kind of shows you the more of a geometric of the floor plan with the parking wrapping underneath the building. We talked about with this area being carved out for vertical circulation and also for our theater area. The memory care is at grade level here which has direct access outs which is part of the code requirements as well. Heavily landscaped, as we, you can see, we've pretty much left this existing lot open. This is the Westerly House as you enter off Janet Lane. That, that existing house will remain for now. We're not sure what we're going to do with it for the time being. It may be used for some events on training for personnel, et cetera, et cetera, but eventually could be built into a medical office or, or even to the villas for senior housing. The existing parking area on the top then would be on where the house lies to the east of Janet Lane. Janet Lane will be reconfigured and it'll be moved to match up with the existing driveway to the north that goes into the farm. And that's already been relocated and approved by KDOT. We're going to be expanding the westbound left turn lane to protect that and also improvements on the, D excel line and excel line along Fabian Parkway which is currently the shoulder. Once again landscaped heavily surrounding the property everywhere that meets or exceeds the code requirements. These are the elevations and they don't do it justice. They're kind of small to see, but it's a mixture of different materials. I believe that Scott Likens has material boards with him that you can look at more closely if you're interested. But it's a combination of obviously glass, stone, fiber cement type siding. We picked it a flat roof with a parapet to more closely mimic what exists around us between the Walmart on one side and in the dryer medical facility to the west. A lot of our traditional facilities are, look more like homes, large homes, but they have the peaked roofs. But in this situation, because it was on the frontage road like Fabian, because it had existing neighbors that were quasi-more commercial, that we thought that looked fit better in the area and transitioned well. Going the wrong way here, here we go. So there's some of the material we talked about, the stone, the different stones, the siding that we talked about, that's a, it's a kind of fiber cement-based material that is color impregnated. So it gives you some variations of, of looks and colors. Here's a little better view. This would be the main entrance off of Fabian Parkway, so it'll be facing north on the wing that extends north-south. This would be a three-story atrium area as we talked about. And we have some very cool designs and plans for that common area and what that will look like in the lobby. This would be the east face, yeah, east elevation, so this would be facing towards Randall Road. This is what you would see as you approach from the east along Hawks Drive. There's a rendering of kind of what the look of the whole building would be combined off the end here, we've got some beautiful balconies and areas and some common spaces on the end for the residents to, to use. As I said, this is an obstructed view to the south across the Hawks Drive to Brabird Here's a view looking to the south off of Fabian Parkway. So this would be the Heinous, Heinous property here in the green in the foreground. This would be the main entrance feature. This is the north-south wing and this is the east-west wing. Windmill Manor, we talked about, this would be Windmill Landings, the existing Walmart and the two existing houses. This house will be torn down and the road will be realigned to service this parking area and the main entrance. And then dryer medical to the, to the west. These are the different floor plans. They're pretty small to see, but give you some idea. That's the, the overall land area which was about seven acres, six point, seven acres or so. We'll go back to the beginning, the very first one.
You did escape. Why is there?
I'm sorry, Scott?
You did escape. Why is there?
Okay. And how do I get to do escape here?
Escape.
Where's the fly through? Here's a, yeah, here's a digitalized image of the fly-around of the property. Don't mind the birds.
When you talked about planned expansion.
Pardon me?
When you talked about planned expansion to the future, where would you?
The expansion would go to the north. I'll show you in the, so.
Those birds are kind of obnoxious, huh?
As we get, as we get around here. So this is the view off of Hawks Drive. And as we transition around, I'll show you where the expansion would be. This is this other lane, now we're spinning around and looking.
See, that was back of house kind of, right?
Pardon me?
That was back of house we just saw.
Yes, it was. That was the back of house, exactly right.
This is the east.
So as we get up to this north corner here, the expansion area would be right over where this port cochere is shown. And it And it would run north into that existing parking lot. And we would do subterranean parking there as well. We would always meet the minimum parking requirements. Obviously, it's got to function for our needs and services. But it would be the two levels above that going over the portico chair and then drop down a floor and fill out the main ground level there. So it's about somewhere between twenty-four and thirty units that we could maximize for additional assisted memory, assisted and independent living units. Which would then get us to somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and seventy total units.
Anyone have any questions? Dave?
I know we're just on ordinance eighteen sixty right now but I'm gonna kind of guess that we're just gonna talk about all the ordinances at one time. I got a couple of questions for you, Dave.
Sure.
The underground parking, is that enclosed and heated?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'm kind of curious about the age twenty-three requirement. With your history of these facilities, how many people do you see?
None. This was totally done at an early stage in the negotiations to satisfy the school districts that we were not going to have schoolchildren. We went through the same process across the street for Windmill Manor and it's like, you know, there are no schoolchildren here.
Yeah.
Never will be.
Yeah.
So to satisfy them, we had to impose that twenty, age twenty-three minimum.
Okay. I certainly support staff's recommendation on the bike path being under your.
And I'll tell you where that came from if I can. When we first started this discussion and we went to the county to get the witch's broom, they gave us a whole laundry list of things they wanted, exclusive utility easements. And they wanted the right-of-way that had been proposed or agreed to in a tri-party agreement between Geneva Batavia and KDOT. So as we're going through all this and we had, obviously trying to satisfy the city because the city needed right-of-way as well for their, not right-of-way but easements rights for their utilities. And everybody said, "I've got mine, you know, you can't have any of mine." And so we're going back and forth. They said, "Oh, by the way, we want you to put in this bike path." "Okay." And they said, "But, you know, we take care of all the bike paths in the county so we'll take it on. We'll, you know, maintain it and so forth." "Okay, that's fine." You know, "It's just a sidewalk and a bike path, we're fine with that." My concern was about how do we control that going across the main driveway? Because you're going to have elderly people visiting elderly people here. And so we want to, you know, I was concerned about the safety issue of that. But hopefully we can do some signage and blinking signage or, you know, caution crossing or something there to slow down the bike traffic or the walkers to make sure they look both ways. But it was our understanding at that time that they were going to take on this obligation. Well, then it got kind of a football. It got hunted around a bunch of different ways. And is it really the county or is it going to be the Park District? And is it Geneva Park District who's not a part of any of these, you know, negotiations or agreements that are in place? So our feeling is, listen, we'll put it in, we'll maintain it until somebody takes over the maintenance of the east or west of us, of the path. Because the last thing you want to do is have one piece of the path maintained, the next piece not maintained. Whoever does it should do it all. So if the county takes it on or the Park District takes it on or the city takes it on in connection with us, then we should be relieved of that obligation.
So Scott or Joel, how do you feel about that type of language?
I'm gonna throw it over to Gary in case he has any questions about that because I know Gary had some concerns about, you know, just generally us maintaining it. But that was kind of the compromise that we have had some discussion about is to say, "Look, if a public entity decides they're going to take it over whether it's the county, the Park District, you know, you're responsible for maintaining it until some other entity agrees to take it over."
That's what you just said, correct?
Yeah, yeah. So we're not last man standing. We have to maintain one piece forever if everybody else is being maintained by the county or the Park District. It doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I would not have an issue with that language at all.
Okay.
If it obligates them to maintain it and the county wants to take it over, I would say so.
Okay. All right, the, I got a couple more things, Susan. We've had some issues on the south side of Hawks Drive with Walmart not having recollection that the landscaping is their obligation. So is there anything here, Joel or Scott, that we have to worry about as far as whose obligation this is and what is written into any agreements?
No, unlike, unlike on Walmart property, Walmart's obligation to maintain actually crosses the street to the other side of Hawks Drive and goes out either direction from where the footwork of the building is. We don't have that situation here. This is only for the properties in front of us and they will need to maintain the landscaping on their property.
Okay, I kind of, kind of thought that was the case but I wanted to be sure of it. I did notice on Knacky's drawing, I think it was page C, two point four, there's a legend on there for the construction road entrance but it's not shown on the drawing. But there is a note saying construction entrance coming in off of Fabian Parkway. So I'm just curious as if there's been conversation about where the construction will be at coming in and out of and is there a designated truck route that they're going to use for this project? And going even further, is there anything obligating this developer slash their contractors to keep the streets clean and maintained?
Doesn't matter. I mean, the general obligation with any development is just for them to keep the streets maintained. As far as construction entrance off of Fabian, from our perspective, we would look at it but that ultimately too would have to be coming from KDOT. KDOT would have to approve a construction entrance in our county permit, highway permit. I'm not sure why we wouldn't also if one was proposed to come off of Hawks Drive. I mean, it's logical in this case, there are two logical frontages. So it's reasonable to allow a developer basically off of a public right-of-way for him to construct everything from the top side. You know, and he could construct also some of it from the bottom side if you will. I don't think that would be unreasonable.
No, I agree with you. I just want to make sure. And they did a great job on the project they just did across the street but I just want to make sure that construction entrances are put in and obviously they have to be safe for ambulances to get into the projects and stuff. Those are all in our ordinances anyway, right, Jeff?
Yes.
Cleanup comes under the soil erosion control.
Yeah.
So we have teeth in that in order to keep the project clean.
Okay. I think lastly, I mean, other than the fact that I'm certainly happy to see this in front of us here tonight and Drew and I both represent that area out there and I've heard nothing but good comments about what you just completed on the south side of the street. And people are looking forward, when I tell them about this, they're looking forward to seeing this come too. So you're certainly welcome to be in the community and well received. The, lost my train of thought here now on the last thing I had.
Memory care.
Oh, the, there is one small, what's that?
She said memory care.
Yeah, I need to go there right now. There's a small, a small piece of land, the Heinous Property, just to the east. And I know this is probably, what's your construction timeframe on this?
Approximately eighteen months.
About eighteen months. So we don't know if anything's going to happen on that piece of property within the next eighteen months. But to the mayor's point, it's probably that Heinous Property is only a hundred feet wide at that point there on Hawks Drive?
I believe it's a little bit wider than that but, yeah, so we've got, we're going to have gaps. We're putting a sidewalk along the north side of Hawks Drive which would be the south side of our property to the property line but then it stops. And that was a concern I had. We worked it out with Scott. I said, "Yes, I'll do it." But my concern is the children from the neighborhood jumping over on the north side, going around there and then jumping back out into the street to get past the delivery area for both our property and more importantly for Walmart.
Right.
There's an existing sidewalk on the south side that goes all the way, you know, along that wall, all the way down to the shopping center.
Is there sidewalk on the north side in the Walmart property? I don't remember.
Some parts of it, but not.
The north. No, not all the way through.
Not all the way through.
The delivery has a sidewalk but not along Hawks Drive.
Yeah, we did have a conversation with the supervisor of Walmart and they were interested in trying to create a linkage though to the Walmart itself. So if the sidewalk does get extended there, I'm looking to see a way to put it into their facility as well.
Yeah, I would think that would be good for Walmart to bring business to their facility to have a sidewalk there. But I'm wondering with the Heinous Property, and I'm not saying that you should be obligated to put the sidewalk in, don't get me wrong with where I'm going with this. If there isn't something that we can think of by the time this development is done that whether we do it with some type of recapture from Heinous when he does do his or whether we can get Heinous maybe to throw that in, I don't know. But it would be nice to see that link completed. You know, if there's a way we could work that out.
Well, the same thing on the north where the bike path stops because then they'd have to jump out onto Fabian which is even worse. So somehow that could be connected, I'm all for that, you know.
Yeah. If there's maybe a way we could think of something in the next eighteen months, I don't know.
Yeah, we can, we can look into that. The Heinous parcel on the south side is a little bit, or on Hawks Drive is a little easier because that's in the city limits. That part, the northern part of Heinous.
Still in the county.
Is incorporated still. So we really don't have any jurisdiction over that until it's anything. But the Hawks Drive section, we can, we can look at that and talk about, you know, what we can do.
Well, originally when we were looking at this, we were going to just buy the Hawks property. And it fit but it didn't fit really well. And so that's when we took on the extra obligation for, you know, north of a million dollars to buy the two houses that were there. So that we did have access from both sides and we could kind of clean this up so we didn't have some properties in the county and some properties in the city and not knowing what might be there because of the commercial zoning. It could have been a, you know, a three AM bar or something that was on Fabian Parkway which, you know, wouldn't sit very well with a forty million dollar plus project we've got. So we were kind of trying to protect ourselves as best we could. And we did, I'd have talked with George and his folks about it. He had some plans for medical office there which we'd love. We just don't have any tenants for it this time. But maybe when our project comes and we have that many seniors right there altogether that there could be a demand for more of the Dryer Medical type of facilities, you know, on his property to help finish it off. So that's, that's our hope. And we'd certainly participate in that if we could, you know, make it work. We're not trying to turn our back on it. It was just, there was no need for us to acquire the additional property there without uses for it.
Last question I have is quite often with projects, developments, improvements, things like that, we talk about not only how many people you're going to employ at the facility which hopefully could come from Batavia or very close surrounding areas, but also how many construction jobs you're going to create. Do you have any idea?
Absolutely, yeah. So it's significant. I mean, as you know, in the construction business, there's, I don't know what the full-time equivalents were but the hard cost of construction is somewhere north of thirty-two million dollars with everything included. And that's not permits and fees and so forth. That's just third-party contract, you know, stuff. So that's going to be a lot of workers.
Significant, yeah.
Usually they say fifty percent of it is labor and fifty percent is materials. So, you know, that's a significant number. And then on top of that, when you look at the economic impact on the community, it's that many more needed roofers, HVAC people to maintain that, electricians, you know, plumbers, et cetera, et cetera. There's ongoing maintenance all the time. And then Chris Ward who's here with us could talk to you about, they have a regularly programmed refurbishing of things. So it's re-carpeting, repainting, et cetera, et cetera. So those folks, that labor force comes from the community obviously. And that happens usually every four to five years. It's a, you know, pretty much continual refreshing, I guess, of things. So we're really, really excited about this. I think this is going to be quite a showplace in your community.
It looks beautiful.
Serve the neighborhood well and the area well.
Thank you. That's all I have, Susan.
That's all you have, Mike?
We have, in Batavia, we have some stormwater issues. So we should don't want any further stormwater issues in new developments. So when you plan models for drainage, do you use a ten-year model or do you use?
This was all done when the property was acquired from the Hawks family and the roadway was put in at mostly their expense and so forth. There was a Harsa study that covered the entire drainage area here including both the homes, the remaining Hawks land. And I believe it actually covered the Heinous Property as well. And all of that was calculated in under the requirements. Core engineers of the state of Illinois. So it's all, all of that, it was already put in place. We actually have, on site, there's the piping with the flumes and so forth where it brings in. And on the south side of the road, it goes out to the marsh and there are diffusers and rock that's already all been installed and put in place. So this plan's been in place for a number of years.
Okay, I just know, I mean, we're getting more water with rain events. And I think climate change is upon us as I've said numerous times. So I just, I have concerns about that.
The point's well taken. We also are always concerned about those and we try to find opportunities to do regional detention facilities instead of having a hundred little ponds around like we used to be in the shopping centers. There'd be a pond in front of every outlaw and they're a maintenance nightmare. And they never look good. So thankfully, in this site, and like I said, I started working here back in the eighties, it was well thought out and well planned by staff back in the day that the drainage studies that were put in place, the requirements and volumes that were accounted for, took care of all this so you didn't have to have all these little ponds all over the place or underground storage.
Another question is where will the flow for sanitary go? Will that go to our facility?
Yeah, this comes to our treatment plant.
Comes to our treatment plant.
Part of Area Twelve.
Yeah.
I guess I'd just be more for Gary, I suppose. I mean, it's just with one Washington place also. I mean, we're starting to introduce a lot more to our facility even though our facility is being worked on to expand its capacity biologically. Just wanted to make sure we weren't overloading our facility.
So back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, when I first got here ten years ago, council approved the infamous red line as I like to call it. That was after many discussions of how much or how large the service area would be. And so council approved a boundary within which we will accept flows to our treatment plant and outside of which we won't accept flows. There's a property of parcel of land about two miles south of this that keeps coming back to the city saying, "We want to come to the city." And we keep telling them, "You're not allowed to come to the city because you're outside the red line." This particular parcel is inside the red line. So we do accept flow from this property. And it was planned for as part of the multi, you know, multi-year exchange.
Also, I would note that in the annexation here, we do have a limitation on the specific PE that is allowed and reserved for this development. So that if they should exceed that, then obviously they have to amend the agreement and have to have some discussion about that. So there are some specific parameters in the agreement that cover that.
And one last question and it's probably premature but would you guys be providing like transportation services for the, say, less ambulatory?
Yes, we do. As a matter of fact, any operational questions? Chris Ward is here. They usually have two vehicles that are on-site and available to take, transport people to and from functions, to and from doctor's appointments, shopping, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a, it's a service that's provided as part of the package.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Anyone else have questions, comments?
My last comment, Susan?
Yes.
I mentioned to the architect here, I apologize, I forget your name. But Scott, I see an awful lot of drawings and we've seen an awful lot of annexation agreements and plans and everything come through the city. And I think somebody mentioned it earlier. It appears as though between Dave and his crew and Scott and Joel and Gary and Laura, they've really done an awful lot of work on this. It's very well prepared. There's not a lot for us to pick apart. There's not a lot for us to chew up and spit out. I mean, I've been in annexation agreements before where we've, you know, had to write in there, "Well, no, you need a sidewalk here, you need to do this, you need to do that." And this one isn't, doesn't fall into that category. So very good job, I think, by all parties.
Thank you. And to your staff because they've really done a wonderful job of guiding us through the, in avoiding the landmines. But it's tough to put this type of a project into a box. It just doesn't fit real well. So my appreciation goes out to your staff for working with us and trying to figure the right solution.
You had enough time, right?
Yeah.
You did say it was about an eighteen-month construction project but assuming everything goes with development or with approvals and your closings, when do you plan on starting?
Well, I hate to be presumptuous but if we could get this land acquired, the last piece of land acquired this week and allow for the notification that was talked about, we, Joel and I conversed today via email, it looks like it could be as soon as October fifteenth on the council agenda for final adoption, right, of the ordinances and so forth. We would want to start right away. We're actually under a, going, getting a grading contract or permit, I should say, from the county. We've got, when this was built, Hawks Drive was built, we found out through our soil borings that a lot of the material was just pushed on the site, was never compacted. And so to take advantage of the weather, we're going to go, we have another job up in Elgin that we're working on. We're going to go ahead and dig out that uncontrolled fill that's there to at least get that material off the site so that when we do get our approvals in place and we get everything, be able to pull our permits that we can start that grading at this fall and work through the winter. So that would be our hope is to start immediately.
Very good.
Anyone else?
It's kind of Herculean. Trying to do it.
It is, it's a lot of paperwork that needs to be done. It is, there's a lot of paperwork that needs to get done. But thank you all for listening, and I appreciate you having us here. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as Joel noted, all the ordinances are attached as Exhibit E to the annexation agreement, that if you do pass the annexation agreement, then the city would be bound to pass those ordinances as well. So, you have to make sure you're comfortable with all the ordinances before you. The vacation ordinance requires a three-quarters vote of the entire
Council?
City, city council, right. So, just wanted to make you aware of that as well, and it's three-quarters, not of who's here, but three-quarters of everybody, and that's to vacate the road, and two-thirds for the annexation.
That's also the same amount for the agreement as well.
Correct.
The annexation has the same requirement.
So, does that mean if we wanna amend Resolution 18-104, we need to make that motion before we approve the ordinance? Or both, the annexation ordinance?
Okay.
Right, yeah, and then Joel would revise those, and then the final vote would come in either October 1st on the annexation agreement or October 15th.
Okay. So, Joel, do you, you want us to start with Resolution 18-104R, amending it to include the sidewalk language, correct?
Yes, you can do that.
Okay. So...
Alderman Stark, we forgot that Alderman Callahan is on the phone.
Right.
Marty, do you have anything?
No, I echo what you said.
Okay, good.
Okay. So, I'll make the motion to recommend a city council Resolution 18-104R, approving the final plan of windmill landings, re-subdivision at 2401 Hawks Drive and 37 West 405 and 37 West 475 Fabian Parkway, and vacated Janet Lane right-of-way, as amended with sidewalk language to include construction and maintenance until it's taken over by some other government entity.
The bike path along Fabian Parkway.
The bike path, yeah.
Second. Is that good, Joel?
Yeah, for clarification, that properties adjacent to are taken over by public.
Right, exactly. Okay, I made the motion, is there a second?
Let's, I think you had a second, wasn't it? Elliot?
Okay.
Let's do roll call, so we know for sure we got.
Can we just clarify that that's taken over by the county or the Forest Reserve or the park district?
A governmental agency?
Well, we're a governmental.
Oh, that's true, other than the city. Oh, you don't wanna ever take it over. Okay, I wanted to make sure that we were clear on that, so you wanted spelled out as to who, okay.
Does that preclude a business association if all the landowners decide they wanted to maintain it too? Does it have to be a government?
If they wanna, if somebody else wants to maintain it, I mean, you'd like to.
Okay, I just don't want to preclude.
Anybody can, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so you have language for that, Scott? Okay, great, okay. So, can we do a roll call, please? Stark? Aye. Chanzet?
Aye.
Salvati absent. Wolf?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
You're absent. Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Risado?
Aye.
And Atac?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And now, when it comes to the rest of these ordinances, because of the transfer of ownership that's pending on Thursday, is there anything different than just passing these, or?
You can certainly include in your motion to recommend approval that the ordinances, that the annexation agreement and the ordinances be amended to reflect the acquired, the applicant having acquired property at 2401 Hawks.
Okay.
And I have sent to Joel and Scott an altered annexation agreement that contemplates that, so they'll review that between now and the time that it comes to council for final approval. But it shouldn't be that complicated.
Okay.
If I may suggest, since the other component ordinances are gonna be part of the annexation agreement, I would probably have you approve B, C, D, and E first, and then go back and approve A, which is the actual annexation agreement.
Okay. Okay. So, I make a motion that we recommend a city council ordinance 1861, amending the land use map of the Batavia Comprehensive Plan for property located at 2401 Hawks Drive and 37 West 405 and 37 West 475 Fabian Parkway and Janet Lane right-of-way.
Second.
Motion by Stark, second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. I recommend that we, I make a motion that we recommend a council ordinance for 1862, annexing and zoning property located at 2401 Hawks Drive and 37 West 405 and 37 West 475 Fabian Parkway and Janet Lane right-of-way.
Second.
Motion by Stark, second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. I recommend, I make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 1863, vacating the Janet Lane right-of-way.
Second.
Motion by Stark, second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, Marty, I keep talking over you. And then, I make, I make a motion that we recommend a council ordinance 1864, amending the official zoning map for the mixed-use district plan development overlay, district for property located at 2401 Hawks Drive and 37 West 405 and 37 West 75, 475 Fabian Parkway, and vacated Janet Lane right-of-way.
Second.
Motion by Stark, second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion also carries. And then, finally, going back to A, I make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 1860, authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement with MRJ and B Batavia LLC and all, for property located at 2401 Hawks Drive and 37 West 405 and 37 West 475 Fabian Parkway, and the Janet Lane right-of-way. And then, how do I amend this exactly? How do you want that written?
You can say the annexation agreement to be amended to reflect the proper property ownership.
Okay, with, with the annexation agreement amended to reflect the current property owners.
Second. Second, you got it?
Motion by Stark, second by Meitzler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion also carries.
Okay.
So, Dave, it looks like we have a new place to live.
What are you trying to say? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you next Monday?
They did that first, yeah, yeah. First, they did. So, yeah, so what'll come in front of you on the first will be the annexation agreement and the comprehensive plan ordinances. Those two will be passed on that date, and then we'll, once they have the paperwork in closing, we've had the notices to the township and everybody else we have to notify, we'll bring the final ordinances back to you on the 15th of October.
Scott, if I could ask, respectfully ask, does it make a difference, does that have to be done on the first, or could it just all be rolled into one meeting on the 15th to avoid multiple trips?